Good morning, good morning, good morning. God bless you. We are so grateful to know that the Lord has blessed us yet again. And we know that truly the joy of the Lord is our strength. Amen. And today we're here to continue now in the book of Psalms. In the book of Psalms, Psalms goes from the first verse to the 150th verse. Therefore, we say that last week to you that it is referred to or referenced as the longest book, or the book in the Bible that has the most chapters, that has the most chapters. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, I stretch my hands to thee; no other help I know. If thou withdraw thyself from us, Lord, where shall we go? Father, we thank you for all that you are, all that you have been, and all that you will be, because we know that you are the same God yesterday, today, and forever. God, we thank you. We know that if you've done it before, you will and can do it again. Thank you, Lord, for every listening ear this morning. Thank you, Father God, for families that are grieving the loss of a loved one. Thank you, Lord, for families that are now grieving the loss of jobs. Father God, we pray for our world. We pray for our country. We pray for our state. And Lord, after what has happened yesterday with the storm, Lord, we just ask that you bless those families that have lost anything. Bless and keep them, God, is our prayer. Lord, we are our brother's keepers, and therefore we must lift each other up in prayer, not just on a Sunday, but every day of the week. Lord, you are the author and finisher of our faith. We don't take that lightly for a moment, Lord, because when our brothers ache, we ache. When our brothers or sisters are in need, we too feel that pain. So bless the families, God, and thank you for what you have done in each and every life this morning. Open up our hearts and minds now that we might receive your word. It is in Jesus' name that we pray with thanksgiving. And we all said who believed, "Amen." Amen. As we look this morning in, as I said, the book of Psalms, we're in chapter two, and it says, "Why do the heathen rage, and the people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against the anointed, saying, 'Let us break their bands asunder, and cast away their cords from us.' He that sitteth in the heavens shall lack; the Lord shall have them in derision. Then shall he speak unto them in his wrath, and bex them in his sore displeasure.'" Verse six, "Yet have I set my king upon my holy hill of Zion." Now in Psalm two, from verses one through six, we're learning about the threatening against the enemies of Christ's kingdom, the threat against the enemies of Christ's kingdom. And as we are looking at that today, we are finding that we are told who would appear to be an adversary to Christ? Who would appear to be an adversary to Christ? And it says that we are told that they aim at this opposition. They aim at the opposition. They would break, asunder, the bands of consciousness and the cords of God's commandments. They will not receive, but cast them away as far as they can. The Lord Jesus, and I'm so glad about this this morning, has all power, both in heaven and in earth. And he is head over all things to the church. God is the head. And it tells us that Christ's throne is set up in his church. And I think we all know today that the church is each and every one of us. Not a building. It's each and every one who worships within that building. And the church is in the heart of the believer. We're now going to look at verses seven through nine. Verses seven through nine, Psalm two. "I will declare the decree the Lord hath said unto me: Thou art my son; this day have I begotten thee. Ask of me, and I shall give thee the heathen of thine inheritance and the uttermost parts of the earth for thy possession. Thou shalt break them with a rod of iron; thou shalt dash them in pieces like a potter's vessel." You see, the kingdom of the Messiah is founded upon an external decree of God the Father. This our Lord Jesus often refers to as what he governs himself by. "God hath said unto him, Thou art my son." And it becomes each of us to say to him, beloved, "Thou art my Lord; thou art my sovereign." The Son is making the heathen for his inheritance, desires their happiness in him, so that he pleads for them, every life to do and to be able to be saved to the uttermost. It is God's desire that we all be saved. And this is why he has said to us that he has given us his Son, that we might accept his Son, the Lord Jesus, in the pardon of our sin. The Father gives us to him that we might accept him as our Lord, our Savior, and our God. He works on us to submit to the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now we're going to look at verses 10 through 11. "Be wise now, therefore, o ye kings; be instructed, ye judges of the earth; serve the Lord with fear, and rejoice with trembling. Kiss the Son; lest he be angry, and ye perish from the way; when his wrath is kindled but a little, bless are all they that put their trust in him." This is letting us know that whatever we rejoice in in this world, it must always be with trembling because of the uncertainty of all things in it. We don't know what's going to happen. When we had the storm yesterday, there were people who actually lost portions of their house, the whole backsides of houses, as the news relates to us, was taken away, trees uprooted. It could have been any of us that this occurred to. We never know. So when we are walking this earth because of the uncertainty of the things that we are in daily, who would have thought last year in 2019, when we're all making big plans for 2020, that we would be in a pandemic at this time? Who would have thought? And while we're yet in the pandemic, let us be mindful that the same ailments and diseases that went on before the pandemic, people are still confronted with these ailments and diseases right now. People are still going through cancer. People are still going through AIDS, HIV. People are still going through various ailments with their body, various cancers, sickle cell, lupus, all of the things that we go through daily. People are still losing jobs. People are still losing family members. So these uncertainties, we are not aware of, that we need to make sure that it is with trembling. We rejoice in the world, but it must always be with trembling because we don't know what happens on tomorrow. The blessing is we know who holds tomorrow. And so therefore, we can approach life differently when we believe in the Lord. So to welcome Jesus Christ and to submit to him is our wisdom and interest. Let him be very dear and very precious. Let us love him above all. We remember the greatest commandment of all in Matthew is to love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy mind, and with all thy soul. And the second is light unto it, to love thy neighbor as thyself. So we are remembering to love him above all, to love him in sincerity, to love him much, as did the woman. If you remember the scripture, and if you have not read it, jot it down so you can remember, that in Luke, the second chapter, around the 38, 39 verse, there was a woman that had been forgiven by God, and she loved God so much that she was crying with tears, tears of joy that he had looked upon her and had forgiven her, that she took her hair, the tears fell, and they washed his feet. She took lots of her hair, and she dried his feet. Then she kissed his feet, and she anointed him with ointment. This is letting us know that this woman loved God so much that she was willing to do these things for him because he had forgiven her of her sins. We've got to have, beloved, that type of love for our Lord and Savior. You see, unbelief is a sin against the remedy. It will be under destruction to ourselves lest we perish in the way of our sin. And from the way of our vain hopes, lest we perish, lest we prove to have missed this way called happiness. There is only one way. Christ is the way. Jesus Christ is the truth and the life. So we must heed that we not be cut off from the way of God. Hallelujah. Now we're getting ready to go this morning to Psalm three. Now in Psalm three, I want to point out something to us because in Psalm three, verses two and verses eight, we come, I'm sorry, two, four, and eight. We are coming across a word now that we have not seen yet in starting from Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, Joshua, Judges, Ruth, First and Second Samuel, First and Second Kings, First and Second Chronicles, Ezra, Nehemiah, Esther, Job, Psalms. We have not come across this word yet until today in Psalm three. And that word is at the end usually of the verse, and it is pronounced selah. S-E-L-A-H. Now, selah is being used in this Bible. Some say selah, some say seelah. It is being pronounced in the Bible as we read it in verses two, four, and eight. And what we need to make sure of is, we said this verse for years. I would read it because it was in the Bible. I've had some people say to me, "You don't have to say that." Well, it is in the Bible, so we might read it because it is there. And what this word is, it's a Hebrew word. And what we have found is that it is usually at the end of the verses. It is mentioned in the book of Psalms 71 times, and it is mentioned in the Bible a total of 74 times. 71 times in Psalms and three times in the book of Habakkuk. Okay, so when we look at this, it tells us that the reader is talking about a praise, that they are to look as they read this and then calmly think about what was read. Other words, it has to sink in. It also can be used as a musical direction because some say, well, it's a musical direction. It was used, and then maybe something musical, they might have sung, might have sung something, or something was played in that essence to make people pause and think about what it says. So we're going to see the word, and as you see it, know that it is a Hebrew word that they have used that could be a peaceful calmness, or it could be used to interject a Psalm. All right, so we begin with Psalm three. "Lord, how are they increased that troubled me? Many are they that rise up against me; many there be which say of my soul, 'There is no help for him in God.'" Seelah. "But thou, O Lord, art a shield for me, my glory and the lifter up of my head." Now, when we look at those verses one through three, as an active believer, the more he is beaten off from God, either by the rebukes of providence or the reproaches of enemies, the faster hold he will take, and the closer will he cleave to him. A child of God startles at the very thought of despairing of help in God. See what God is to his people. You see what he will be, what they have found him, and what David found in him. So if you're taking notes, I want you to jot today, this is what David found in the Lord. Are you ready? Number one, David found safety. He found safety because he says there in verse three, "But thou, O Lord, art a shield for me," my glory. He's a shield, so he found safety in the Lord. And then number two, David found honor. He found honor. He said, "Those whom God owns for his have true honor put upon them." If we're living for the Lord, we should have some type of honor. When our name is said, there should be some type of respect. Amen? God warrants that. Amen? So there should be some type of honor that should be put upon us as believers in God. And the third thing that David found in God was joy and deliverance. David found joy and deliverance. All right, so let's recap on that. As a child of God, we know that we can find various things. We do. We see. We are God's people. We know that God is going to bless us. And David shares with us that he found three things in God. He found safety because God was a shield for him. David said he found honor because he was respected. Amen? And David said he found joy and deliverance. You see, if in the worst times, God's people can lift up their heads with joy. Do you see that portion of verse three? "And the lifter up of my head." God, he's my shield. He's my glory. I find honor and glory in him. And then he's the lifter up of my head. So David says that, and it tells us that by God's people, we can lift up our heads with joy in knowing that all shall work for good to them that he owns. Amen? God is giving us both cause and hearts to rejoice. Amen? Every day, it's new mercy. So God is blessing us, and we should be a lifter up of our heads, knowing that God is yet blessing us. Let us look now at verses four through eight. "I cried unto the Lord with my voice; and he heard me out of his holy hill." Selah. "I laid me down and slept; I awake; for the Lord sustaineth me." Hallelujah. He sustaineth me. "I will not be afraid of ten thousands of people that have set themselves against me round about. Arise, O Lord; save me, O my God; for thou hast smitten all mine enemies upon the cheekbone; thou hast broken the teeth of the ungodly." And verse eight, "Salvation belongeth unto the Lord; thy blessing is upon thy people." Seelah. Here we are looking at these verses four through eight. And it says that care and grief does us good because it says, "I cried unto the Lord with my voice; and he heard me out of his holy hill." Usually when we cry unto the Lord, it's because we have experienced something that we were not happy about. So we are crying, asking God for help, asking God for direction. And we've learned that care and grief, you know, it's a good thing that we cry because it engages us to pray. Every time something is going wrong, the loss of a loved one, loss of a job, loss of a relationship, whatever happens that we are going through, illness, diseases, things of that nature, we cry unto the Lord. And when we cry, we usually bow or lay before the Lord in prayer. We are seeking God, and we're asking him for help. And when we engage in this, when we are engaged, we're praying to God. And God loves that we pray and that we communicate to him in earnest. Amen? Because that's when we really, "Oh, Lord, God help me." You know, we are pouring our hearts out to the Lord. So David has always found that when we do this, that God has answered his prayers. David is saying, "Every time I pour my heart out to the Lord, every time I seek him, God has answered my prayers." He says, "Nothing can fix a gulf between the communication of God's grace toward us and the working of God's grace within us, between his favor and his faith." Amen? Two things we must have. If we have faith, God will show us favor. He has always been very safe under the divine protection of the Lord. And this is applicable to the common mercy of every night. You know, we used to pray that little prayer. "Now I lay me down to sleep; I pray the Lord my soul to keep; I should die before I wake; I pray the Lord my soul to take." That is a very true thing. We are seeking God. We are praying. We are asking him that as we lie our heads down, as we take our sleep, that he will watch over us. He will send his angels to guard over us and protect us. We have to know that there are common mercies every night for which we ought to give God thanks every morning. Before we lie down and go to sleep, we ought to thank the Lord for the day that he has already blessed us to have. When we wake up in the morning, even before you get out of bed, when you open your eyes, it should be a hallelujah thank you, God, for waking me up this morning. Amen? We are under his divine protection, and we should give him thanks. Many lie down and cannot sleep through the pain of the body, things going on in their minds that become anguish to the mind, the continual alarms of the fears at night. If someone break in, some of us are almost paranoid. But it seems here that it's meant of the calmness of David's spirit, that David had a spirit, that he knew that even in the midst of his dangers, in the midst of everything that was going around him. Look at what he says in verse five. "I laid me down and slept; I awake; for the Lord sustaineth me." Hallelujah. Verse six says, "I will not be afraid of ten thousands of people that have set themselves against me round about. Arise, O Lord; save me, O my God; for thou hast smitten all mine enemies upon the cheekbone; thou hast broken the teeth of the ungodly." Salvation belongeth, excuse me, unto the Lord; thy blessing is upon thy people. David is saying it is a great mercy when he's in trouble. He knows that the Lord will deliver him. He's saying that, you know, that we too, as Christians of faith, we must learn how to sleep and how to die, while it assures us that as asleep is a short death, so death is only a longer sleep. Lord, have mercy. I'm gonna say that again. So sleep is a short death when we sleep, but death is simply a longer sleep. "The same God watches over thee in thy bed and in thy grave." David's faith became triumphant, beloved. He begins the psalm with the complaints of the strength and the malice of his enemies. That's how he started out. You know, "How are they that increase that trouble me?" But then he ends it by talking about the rejoicing in the power and the grace of his God. And salvation, as it ends in verse eight, "Salvation belongeth unto the Lord; thy blessing is upon thy..." "Salvation belonging unto the Lord; thy blessing is upon thy people." Salvation belongs to the Lord because he has, he has the power to save. "Be the danger ever so great; all that have the Lord for their God are sure of salvation; for he who is their God is the God of their salvation." Hallelujah. Thank you for joining us today. I want you to read for your assignment, Psalm four, five, and six for next week. Psalm, Psalms four, five, and six for next week. And we will discuss those three chapters with you. I'll be looking for you on Sunday for worship experience. Please join us at Sunday Facebook Live at eleven. I would love to have you come be prayerful and know that, as I said on last Sunday, if you didn't before, know that he can do it again. God bless you, and may his peace be upon you.